Clay Township Board Trustees Meeting, no order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. It was an interesting weekend. My Spartans did well. Sorry.
Move along.
Super.
Move along.
Move along. The Lions, I'll, you know, I could have assigned say eight, no, and then just for the Lions, just flip it upside down, the O and A.
Eight.
So, okay. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Borey.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right. First thing on the agenda, we have two public hearings, really.
No.
Or no, it's the second public hearing, I'm sorry, for the Colony Isle Canal Aqua.
Aquatic.
Aquatic.
Resolution number five?
Yeah. For treating the canals. So, I will entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for Colony Isle Canals at 6:02.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, motion carries. Okay, at this time I'll open up the public hearing, the second one, for the aquatic treatment of the Aqua Isle Canals. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about the special assessment for the canals? They are in there by Sassy Marine, by between Riverside, Park Lane, Aqua Isles, and then Marina Drive, the four canals. Anybody want? Going once, twice? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Colony Isle Canals Aquatic Cleaning at 6:03.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion?
I need to approve.
No, we'll get to that here in a second. We just got to allow everybody to say yea or nay or whatever. So, any discussion on that? All in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, bills to be approved. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion that today we approve bills payable in the amount of $21,135 and 2 cents.
Support. We have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the supervisors' report. Last, actually, it was Thursday and Friday, I had some, did MTA Supervisors Retreat up in Frankham, it was good, good, actually about two and a half days of training and networking. The big, the big issues were local control issues concerning gravel pits, 5G cellular service, solar and wind farms, short-term rentals were a big issue or a thing, and marijuana, possible new legislation on controlling marijuana. So, and it was a good, good thing. I got some good, good ideas, and by the way, in your packet is what we've come up with so far for short-term rental agreements. So, if you guys can, or for the applications, so if you guys can take a look at that and give us some feedback on that, we gotta get that ball rolling. That was Elginak concerning their water plant this past week. We're scheduled to switch out three banks of the filters, and they are seven years old. That's pretty much their life expectancy, is you get between five and seven years on that. But part of the testing, they do a pressure test. In other words, they plug it, put about three pounds of pressure, and it's got to hold that pressure for a certain amount of time, and they've been starting to fail that pressure test. And I put a picture in your packet. It's because these blocks now hold the filter in place, they're cracking, and that's where they're losing the air pressure. So, these blocks are going to have to get changed out. They're in the process of getting quotes for these. This is actually the only thing that, or this will be an unbudgeted item, and they ain't cheap. And the only, there's only a couple suppliers, and they're actually from Australia, so I'm questioning the availability of them too. But there, I just want to give the boards a heads up, that's going to be coming down the pipe.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
During the filters being replaced, did we not exchange numerous filters due to recall on them and/or out of service the last, two years ago?
No, it was, it was, it was about five, six years ago. It was quite a while.
I remember.
I was on them.
Yeah. Well, you were here then. It was, it was quite a while.
Didn't seem that long.
I know. Time flies.
And the, and the blocks, they can't be sealed up, repaired, or?
Well, that's what, I mean, I asked, I asked those questions. They, they really don't make anything like that, and it's pretty labor-intensive to change them, and, and you can only change them. I mean, it makes sense to do it when you swap the new filters, because otherwise to pull a filter out, it's really easy to damage it. You gotta keep these filters wet. They're, they're kind of delicate, and to do it while keeping them wet, it's pretty hard to do, to change these blocks out. There, there was a question on the threading, because I asked them about the design of the new blocks, and these were, are all fine thread with the filters, and they, they do make a coarser thread now, which would probably stop them from cracking more so, and make the swap with the filters a little easier. So, I, I asked them to check into that.
Are those ceramic or just?
They're plastic. So.
So, this work was already done?
No. No, they're getting quotes for it right now. They'll, they'll have to come to us for approval.
Because this says had to remove 18 modules to be able to replace the broken blocks in rows three, four, and five. After inspecting the three blocks that were making noise, I found that they had a large crack up the side.
Right.
After replacing the block, blocks, they have quit making noise.
Yeah, no, they, they haven't been replaced.
Is it possible to get somebody here from the Elginak Water Plant?
Yep.
Or Elginak next, next time we have to approve stuff?
Problem is, the manager's day off is on, on Monday, so I'll have to.
I thought it was Wednesday.
What?
I thought she was off on Wednesday.
No, the, the Elginak Water Plant Manager.
Plant Manager.
It's off on Monday, but I'll, I'll see if we can get somebody here. And then I wanted to mention the, the roof repairs are scheduled to happen now in April '22, and the strainer replacement that we approved is now postponed to January of '22, just because of availability of parts. Been dealing with a lot of building and blade issues as usual. We're working on finalizing the audit. I think they're waiting on just one small thing from me. Looking for a, a member for the Elginak Clay Library Advisory Board, if anyone's interested. They meet three, four times a year on Thursday evenings, I think at 7 o'clock. Had one person that we had, or had to resign. And I've been also doing some work, and I'm gonna, I gotta amp it up on Biocentennial Celebration, it'll be next May, as Clay Township turns 200 years old. On roads, we're working on getting materials lined up, and, and also just called in Ms. Dig on the culvert replacement at Ed, Ed Lane in Steyer. Every time it rains there, it goes, that corner goes underwater, and getting that going. And I don't know if you noticed, but MDOT did repave M29 from North Clay Township by the state park all the way up to Broad Bridge.
Is that the culvert that the resident has been asking to be replaced?
Yes. Yes. It's in the works, one of them. So, at a wastewater treatment plant, or we, we met with all the parties that are concerned. Our wastewater treatment plant, it's shared with Elginak, Ira, and Clay Township. And how it's all set up, or how it's set up is, you know, we, we buy, we built this plant, we buy capacity. Clay and Ira has 35% capacity of the, of the plant facility, and Elginak has 30%. And the plant's really rated for about 3 million gallons a day to process, but it, it can take more than that if needed, but it's really designed for 3 million. During pretty high water and during normal weather, we put about, depending on the year, maybe 2 million, two and one-half, 2 million gallons a day to it. So, it's really, it hasn't been a problem until high water came two years ago, or now we get a rain event. And the problem is, all three communities, we, there's infiltration being through the system. Clay Township's worked really hard in, in resolving our infiltration issues. We had down Anchor Bay Drive, a few other places, we replaced manhole covers and looked for leaks, found some big ones down along M29 by Butterfield, we found a big one. Been doing a lot of cammering and, and everything else to resolve it, and there's a problem now where, like I say, it's been during the real high water, it's been about 5 million gallons a, a day, and we're, we're all over our, our capacity, but Elginak has been, you know, they're at 30%, they've been well over that. And I, there, there is a agreement that really is, needs to be updated between us three communities and the county who runs it, and this agreement expired years ago, and I've been after them to, let's get it renewed, let's get it renewed. That's going to come to the table here pretty quick, and with the three communities and the county, but I want to see in there if a particular community is over their capacity, that they pay a little more in fines or, or a higher rate for whatever they're over their capacity. Because it's not fair, like Elginak, or Clay paid 35% for the capital expenditure for this plant, and if another community or Clay is over our capacity, and we're, we're depreciating our share of the community or the capital expense faster, that should be reflected in, in the pay rate.
Is that, is that capacity also rated by?
Eagle.
By eagle, and then by actually physical use or physical capacity?
Yeah, yeah. It's all meter. But we did, and I was surprised too, I just want to tell the board, we, we really need to shore up the infiltration problem, Clay, Ira, and Elginak equally. Because remember about a month ago, we had that big rain, I don't know, it was like five inches or six inches? We had, the, the plant had 7 million gallons that day during, and it's all from infiltration. And it was really close to, we were close to losing it, and it's never happened before, but, I mean, you know, they called me up, they don't call Elginak or Ira, we're losing the plant in the middle of the night, and it, it literally becomes a question, do we dump raw sewage in the water, which we've never done before? I want to make that clear.
And please let's not do that.
It's never happened. Or do we turn it off and let it back, back full into everyone's house? Which, that's not a good solution. I don't want to make that decision, because neither one is good. I mean, and then we'll be, get sued by homeowners and everything, but we were really, really close to that a month ago, and this is why we need some changes has to be done. And, and we had another issue at the same time, because we had a power outage, and they, they only have enough generators to keep half the pumps going at one time. So, they switched, switched to, okay, we're going to run these pumps. Okay, unplug, hurry up, switch, unplug these and, and pump it. And so, we are buying a new generator that can handle all the pumps at the same time. That will help out. And there are a few more tweaks we can do to help out their capacity at, at, at the plant to increase that. But, like I say, some people won't like it, but we're, I have instructed our water department to start cammering for illegal hookups. I am, I am 100% guaranteed that most of our infiltration is from illegal hookups to our, our sewer system. People hook up their pump, their sub-pump underneath their house, it dumps right into our sewer, put it in the stormwater, that's what it's for, not our sewer, but it's going into, to the sewer system. Or their Eve's troughs are running into, to the sewer system, or they're pumping, or they have a sewer cleanout in the middle of the yard. We caught two people, unscrew it, and let their, their yard drain into the sewer cleanout valve. And just when it rained about a week ago, we were going around cammering and saying, I mean, we can figure out, oh, this pump station is pumping a lot higher than it normally does. So, we got something going on, so we do some investigation. But it, it, it's a serious problem, people don't realize it, but, and I told them, we're going to, we may start doing some smoke tests. That's one way, we put smoke in the sewer system, and you can tell if they're, if it's hooked up illegally without a, 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 a catch, you know, a thing.
Trap.
A trap, you know, smoke will come out their bilge, or their sump pump, and, and we'll see it, or their gutters.
Yeah. Earlier this year, maybe it was end of last year, we put on display, or at least we talked about having all of the valves and, and caps or whatever it is post-monitored by the system. Is that all in place now?
It's getting there. It's getting there. I mean, we, but this is all on, on our side it is, but not on the, on the private side. You know, I, I mean, it, it, and, you know, there's like probably five, six streets that are, you know, we can tell from our, the volume on our lift stations.
But that's still in the, that's still in the process.
Yes.
That was part of, that was part of the project.
Right, and we're cammering, like I say, you discover a lot when you camera. And so, and please don't, I don't want to make that decision, to push this, push the sewage back to people's homes and let it, you know, go backwards and flood basements or whatever.
What would the fine be for over-capacity penalty?
I don't know. It would be a, a eagle thing, and I don't want to find out.
Well, I would just say, you know, some of this stuff could be a cost avoidance.
Oh, it is.
If you put manpower on it.
It is. That's what, so. Like I say, I mean, other communities, I know, Macomb and other counties, they've, they have dumped into the water. If you know me, I love this river, our natural resource, I just don't want to have to be put in that position again, so, like I say, we're, we're.
I'm with you.
We're, we're looking for illegal hookups, and there's going to be fines, and I instructed the water department, if, if they don't want to fix it, we'll pour cement down it, down their drain, and that'll be one way they fix it. I'm, I'm serious as a heart attack when it comes to this.
How do you increase capacity? Because, you know, global warming, you're just probably going to have more of this going on, you know, you're going to have more damage.
Well, you gotta, you gotta tighten up the system so we don't have the leaks, the infiltration. And we've done it, a lot of it, on our side with the manholes and everything else. Are, is it 100%? No, but it's pretty close. We spent a lot of money, you know, of sealing everything down and tightening it up, but i- is it fair that, I mean, pump your water back to the river, don't pump it into our sewers. That's, that's, that's all it takes. It's not that hard, but there's been some people doing it, you know, pumping into the sewer for a long time. It increases our costs and our capacity. I mean, we, we have to process this water like it's, it's sewage, and that's not easy.
And for clarification, we're talking about water from your drain tiles, water from your gutters, standing water from your yards.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Groundwater infiltration into our system.
Right.
Things that could safely be, you know, diverted back to the rivers and streams.
Put them in a ditch.
Like Mother Nature intended, but instead, they're being pushed to have to force our wastewater treatment plant to then treat this excess water as sewage, correct?
Yeah.
Which comes at a high cost.
Yep.
I think a lot of it is just that people not realizing what they're doing is the consequence, you know, it's unintended consequences, so.
100%. It's a lot of education.
And with all the home sales, it could be even people that are new don't even know that maybe the old people had it hooked up that way.
Correct.
Yeah, maybe we can start including something on our water billing.
Well, that's.
Things for them to check, you know.
That's the thing, we, I mean, we've been checking, and then they knock on the door, and they say, hey, you know, you got a pump that's pumping into the sewer. And, and, you know, nine out of 10 times, they say, well, I, I didn't know, and so we get it disconnected.
Yeah, you know.
But we don't want to come back the following month and see, find the same pump.
Reconnected.
Reconnected, because that's what happens quite a bit.
One of the experiences I encountered on a home that I was concerned with, they had actually, the groundwater underneath the crawl space, they actually busted a hole in their sewer line, and that's where they had groundwater drained in.
Yeah, I see that. So, a smoke test will, would find that too, because right now, you can't find it until a, a event's happening, you know? So, you know, our guys are out in the rain looking for this stuff, but a smoke tet, test, you know, you, it'll, it'll find those, those type of things when, when we're not having a, a rain or a high-water event. Want to give kudos, I'm sure he'll bring it up next in one of his reports, but the fire department did a lot of training for, or education for the, the young kids for fire prevention. How many kids did you do?
Over 450 kids.
450 kids, you know, where they go into schools and, and teach them about fire prevention and, and what to do, and a big thing, you know, there's a fire in a house, little kid, five, five, six-year-old kid, you know, they're scared, they're hiding in the closet or under their bed or whatever. Then they see a fireman walk in their room, but they got their, all their gear on and their scot pack, I mean, they look like an alien, you know, with their, their breathing apparatus and, and everything else, and with all the smoke and everything. So, the most important thing, this teaches them what a fireman looks like, and not to, you know, they say, oh my God, here comes a ghost or a alien. I'm, I'm, I'm not coming out. You know, this really teaches them to come out to, you know, to get help if they're scared and panicking. So, great, that's, that's, that's very important work, so I just wanted to bring that up. We had a great Scarecrow Festival Saturday, it was, even though during the rain, it was well-intended and lots of fun, and about a week or, no, it was about two weeks now, the police did their hunter safety classes for safe hunting for kids, it was free, and they do, what do you do, about 40, 45 kids, and I know it's a lot of work, but man, I'd really love that we do ORV or ATV safe, safety class, because there are none. People are buying all the, all these ATVs and everything. You can't even find a safety class to put your kid in to, to do these. I'd love it if we can do that. There was three community Halloween events, I guess, yesterday, the bonfire at Elginak had about 500 kids, that was awesome. The Pearl Beach Lions had their bonfire, and Harson's Island did a big Halloween bash at the Lions there, and they're all well-attended, so. I think it's December 5th, don't hold me to it, but we're doing a bowl, a fundraising bowl-athon or bowling event to raise money for Goodfellows for this Christmas. And I just want to say congratulations to Cabana Blue for getting open over on the Dyke Road, I've heard lots of good things, and also, we got a new food truck right where, I still call it the Roadhouse, but Bugsy's was, and I stopped and talked to him, I actually had the steak quesadilla yesterday, oh my God. It was, I couldn't eat it all, it was really good too. And he, he has plans on moving into the building, and it was weird, because I saw a lot, a lot of French food on there too, the guy's Mexican, and so just, I was, you know, throwing a couple cannolis on that thing. Honestly, God, they were, they were about the best cannoli I ever had. I never had a Mexican cannoli, so maybe next time we'll try the lasagna, so. Long report, sorry, losing my voice, I know that's good for you guys. I did want to mention too, one thing, I haven't been feeling up to myself feeling the last couple months. I've been slow. I had a health issue, which I still have. I, I did go in the hospital for about a week, had a procedure done on my heart, and I am like, I'm back to old Artie, but I got the energy that I had two years, three years ago, and I'm 100% with lots of, lots of miles on my odometer left, so, I was, it was, it was weird, I had to tune up my ticker, so it's, it's going first class right now, so, just got to get my voice back.
Welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
Glad to be back, yeah.
Believe me, because I, I felt it the last couple months, and, and, yeah, I'm ready to go now. Look out. All right, enough of my report. Public comments, do we have any public comments? Any public comments on anything? Going once? Going twice? No public comments? Okay, moving right along. Consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes from October 18th, 2021, bills payable and check reports, payroll reports. from October 18th, 2021, bills payable and check reports, payroll reports, and the communication included for the short-term rental application example.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Do we need to pull anything out? Are any questions right now?
I have a question. The in-between meetings, water reliability study, 24.6% complete, $11,065. What was the total budget for that?
Oh, I'd have to look.
If you'd have called my office before the meeting, I could tell you.
Yeah.
Man, I can't, no.
Yeah.
Does that include the COVID testing?
Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we have to do a
I know we approved it.
Yeah, every five years.
Okay.
We have to do a biggie. And that's what we're in the middle of. It's an Eagle requirement. Okay, anything else? We have motion support. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, motion carries. All right, next, we have unfinished business. We have the water plant upgrade. And I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting. That was last month, or last meeting, two weeks ago. But they, it was postponed because we only had one bid for this. And I did actually bring it up again last week at our water plant meeting. The only one that's going to bid on this is for the SCADA is, what is it? UIS. We were hoping to get a second bid from Kennedy Industries or DuPont. Kennedy came out a couple, three times, and then just basically said, we're not going to bid on it. And UIS did supply the system to the plant. And it'd be like your brain went out on your car, and you have a Ford, you know, is GM going to supply that brain to fix the brain on your Ford? You know, probably not. So that's why there is only one quote. And the quote actually that we got or received from them, I was a little worried because it expired yesterday, the end of the month. And so I contacted Elgin Act before that and asked them if we can get an extension on the quote, because I don't want them to say, you know, November 2nd, oh, yeah, the quote's up five grand now, type thing. But they did extend it 10 days. So this is a good quote, and it was a budgeted item on our capital improvement plan, so.
Does the upgrade consist of?
Well, it's called a SCADA system, and it's really the brains that monitors the whole water system, the intake, make sure that it's being treated right as far as chemicals, and it's within the limits of that Eagle sets forth as far as drinking water safety. We have quite a few different monitors in the whole process. There's $103,000. We did have $125,000 budgeted for it. And it is something that we really need to do. The system is a 20-year-old system that we're going to be upgrading.
I'll make a motion to approve the Elgin Act Water Plant Upgrade for $103,120.
Clark?
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion or?
So this is, as the water treatment plant goes, there's continual and repetitive maintenance that has to occur every year, every three years, every five years, every seven years, right?
Yeah.
Now, sitting in my seat, right, I know that these things are going to come down the line, but I'm not educated enough to know when and where the pumps, the filters, the service panels have to be replaced.
Right.
Shouldn't the manager of the Elgin Act Clay Water Treatment Plan be providing us information on an annual basis as to what we can expect as far as maintenance upgrades throughout the course of the year? I mean, is that unreasonable to supply us with maybe a one, three, and a five-year plan?
That's a good question. In fact, I asked that same question of Elgin Act several years ago, and it gets preaddressed. You know, we need a capital improvement plan. And they gave us a questionable one that wasn't realistic. And about two years ago, a year and a half ago, we got a more realistic one. Because remember, in my budget, I put aside X amount of dollars.
Yeah, you're very good at that.
Per year. Because like, we can go, okay, nothing's going on, nothing's going on, nothing's going on. Oh, you know, year four, we got to spend $500,000 on filters, you know? So I did that for 20 years. And I think we're putting away, I don't know, a couple hundred grand for these expenses. And this was one of them. I'll provide you, and it gets updated. And I'm not sure if I gave it to the board or not. If not, I'm sorry. I will give you updated.
So they have provided you with one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I really had, I had to beat the bushes for it.
Just seems if the shoe were on the other foot.
Oh, yeah.
Like, our board is, and departments are so together that we would have a capital outweigh expenditure.
Right.
Or for probably 10, 15. It's a water treatment plant.
Yeah.
And you know what's coming down the pipe.
I mean, we, yeah, because that's what I wanted for a budget process. You know, you know, you know, these expenses are coming up. And you don't, like I say, I tried to pull out a couple hundred grand a year. Okay, this is put aside for expenses in the water plant. I pull out like 15 grand a year. This is set aside for tank maintenance for our tanks and our lift stations. So it makes the budget spread out instead of this.
Exactly.
And that was my attempt. And
I remember you speaking about that.
Yeah. And, because the big thing is the filters. You know, they're good for five to seven years. Well, you know, it's $350,000 to do the whole plant. I was trying to get them on a thing. Well, there's four banks. And Bank Four somehow lasts a lot longer than the other three. It was an add-on later. And Bank Four, by the way, not to go backwards, but on those blocks, they have the coarse-thread blocks instead of the fine.
Bide-rid.
That's why I'm telling them, I want to go with the coarse thread. But anyhow. Okay, we know these filters are good between five and seven years, you know? Let's do one year, another one year two, another year three, instead of all three on one year.
Right.
Working towards that, haven't quite gotten there. Because there's a few things you can do to extend the life of these filters. You can, what they are, they're just, well, you've seen them, they're just spaghetti.
We're kind of in the weeds here.
Okay, I'm getting too technical. Okay. All right, so yes.
Thank you.
We, all right. Do we have motion? Do we have support?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Any more discussion? Hearing no, roll call vote.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I'm sorry, I can get it going. I know way too much about
I know, I know. I'll just reel it back in a little bit, get you on the main road.
Yeah. I'm embarrassed to say I know way too much between garbage and this and that.
I remember you talking about this a while, you know, a few years ago.
All right. New business. Colony Isles Aquatic Resolution 5, confirming the special assessment role. This is the resolution. Five, I got to make sure I got the, that's four.
Resolution number five, which is also 2021-29D?
Yes.
And that's, we just had our second
Public
Public hearing?
Yes.
So we're, I believe we're ready to vote on it?
That's, I'm waiting for a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021-29. That's a special assessment district for Colony Isle Canals, the aquatic management, Resolution Number Five.
Support.
Okay, I have support. So in a nutshell, it's $41,000 spread over, is it five years?
Yes.
Five years. And we had overwhelmingly support for it. So I do have motion and support. Any discussion?
Just that that will be going on the winter tax bill this year, the 21 winter. The first installment.
Yep. Okay, no discussion. Roll call.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Hilton, sorry. Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, next, we have a resolution for the bridge repair on North Channel Drive West on the costs.
I just want to point out, when the board packet was initially published, these resolutions have been updated. They're all before you this evening, and the resolutions just include the addition of interest to be determined for this and for the paving.
So the cost is $109,000 for the bridge repair. Plus interest, and basically comes out to a sum of $4,980 per parcel. And it's spread out over 15 years. And I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did have our township engineer look at the whole project. And he did say that it will last at least 15, probably 20, 25 years of good life to it. Because the last thing I hate to tell people is they got to pay a special assessment when darn thing, you know, needs to be redone. Not saying that there won't have to be any maintenance on it, but the new bridge will last, in his mind, as long as this, you know, outlive the special assessment. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the North Channel Drive West Resolution Number Three, 2021-C, Bridge Repair, approving the costs.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion?
Didn't we bounce this back and forth between 10 years and 15 years at the last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So we decided 15.
Not make it so complicated.
Yeah. And our engineer was good for it, with it. So initially, they wanted to go 20 years. I, yeah, that's a little tough. But, I mean, 15, I was good with it. I mean, our engineer was good with it. So we do have, do we have any more discussion?
No, I'm clear.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I was, I just, it was
Thanks, it's all right. No problem. Hearing no more discussion, roll call, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next, we have Resolution Four for the North Channel Drive West Bridge Repair to set the second public hearing. That will be December 6.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-30D for North Channel Drive West Bridge Repair, setting the second public hearing for December 6, 2021.
Support. All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion? We will have another public hearing. The state says we got to do two, so we will have it December 6, 2021. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Hey, motion carries. Got resolutions all over the place here now. All right, North Channel Drive West Resolution for the costs, approving the costs. Resolution Three. And for the cost of the paving of that road, $70,688 plus interest. It comes out to $49.45 per foot. And it will be spread out over 15 years.
I'll make a motion to approve the cost for the North Channel Drive West Paving Resolution 2021-31C and the North Channel Drive West Paving Resolution 2021-31D for $70,688, $49.45 a foot.
And setting the public hearing for 12/6/2021.
That's the second part. Just trying to finish that sentence for you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that?
Support. Okay, so we have a resolution supporting the costs of $70,688 and the public resolution or public hearing.
Correct.
For 12/6/2021. Does everyone understand that?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yep, I was the second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Am I all done with resolutions? I see the C and the Ds. Yeah, yeah, that's it. All right. Fire Department, one thing I did want to mention to the board, too, we're going to have to, because these special assessments weren't in our budget. We're going to have to amend our budget for these items and a few other items, too. Here, I'd like to do that probably at least in December, if not sooner. So get a chance to put some numbers together and see if we need any tweaking in other places. Your budget, it's a working document, so we're going to have to work on it. I just want to mention that. Fire Department radio purchases, $11,870 on line item 971. This is a budgeted, I think I had $24,000.
Yes, we budgeted $24,000.
Yeah, so this is.
At ATV, you had $11,872.
Yes. I saw that. I even looked. I'm forgetting something else. Actually, on that line, we got $26,000 budgeted. And they came in $11,872.22.
How many radios are you getting?
We're getting two for the new fire trucks. These will be compatible, encryption compatible capability or These will be compatible, encryption compatible capability or compatible, because eventually we're gonna be encrypting all our radios.
Who's gonna do the money, you guys?
That would be Comsource, Comsource, they're Motorola. And that's included in price, installation and programming.
Plus install.
Board, I'll make a motion to support Chief Rose's purchase of two Motorola APX sixty-five hundred mobile radios with encryption capabilities in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Mark Burchard?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, next we have a couple of new hires for our fire department. Scott Walsh and Max Lo- Lewis.
Stramps.
The Stramps.
Like, there's no L there.
Thank you.
There's no L anywhere in there.
So you must be Max.
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, go ahead, Chief.
I'm asking permission from the, uh, the board to, uh, hire a part-time two firefighters. It would be Scott Walsh, he's presently a firefighter at East Point Fire Department, over twenty-five years of experience. Scott is certified as firefighter one, fighter two, and also a paramedic with the state. Scott couldn't be here tonight because of Sunday's last football games tonight. They normally have it on Tuesdays, but due to the election, school's closed tomorrow, so he cannot make it. He will come to the next board meeting, uh, this month, and I will introduce you to him. I also would like to bring on Max, uh, Max is presently a firefighter at Highland Park. He's had, with two years in service, Max is certified fire one, fire two, and also licensed, state licensed EMT.
Great. How you doing, Max?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, you live around, around here in the area?
Pretty close, I'm in Chesterfield.
Oh, yeah. Do you know how to swim?
I do.
Bonus.
You been on the airboat yet?
No, I haven't seen that.
Any questions for Max while we got him on the hot seat?
Chief tell you that you're required to attend six of these meetings a year?
Very quick.
All right.
Max, how long have you been a firefighter?
About two years now.
About two years with Highland Park?
Uh, a year and a half at Highland Park, I was previously at Saddle Lake.
Okay, Mark, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, stepped on you, but, yeah, I was just saying you had a handful of qualifications here, it looks pretty good, especially the head training.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Love that.
Sounds good.
Just so the board realizes, when Chief brings somebody on, you know, we need them to have firefighter one and two and EMT, which is usually what I put in the board packet, but if they have any other qualifications, nine times out of ten, there's a stack of them in my office. The board's welcome to stop in and check out anytime. But our, sometimes their qualifications would be larger than our board packet, so they're available for inspection upon request.
There's one of them right here.
Yeah, look at that, crazy.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to support Chief Rose's new hire introduction of Scott Walsh and Max Distrems to the Clay Township Fire Department.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of both hires signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations, Max, welcome aboard.
Look forward to seeing you around.
I was just kidding about the meeting thing.
He was quick, he was right on it, absolutely, I'll be here. Like, that's what it takes, I mean.
Sounds good. All right, may, maybe, uh, Max can help you out, beat the police in the next year's scarecrow fest.
Oh.
Ooh.
Whoa, slinging mud.
Slaying mud. All right, uh. Okay, next we have a special, uh, Colony Waterline Special Assessment Interest Payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the Colony Waterline Special Assessment Interest Payment in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-six cents from line item eight five four nine nine zero nine nine five.
Support. Motion and support, this is a budgeted item and it's right on the money and, uh. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose, motion carries. All right, next we have Clay Township Park, uh, the building, under building maintenance and update the, or put a furnace in it, actually. We budgeted eighty-five hundred for this, uh, we got a couple of quotes, uh, and after the electrical, this one will not exceed, because this electrical is between six and eight hundred, not to exceed sixty-eight hundred, six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars is the low bid with Kelly Cooling. Or Kelly and Sons, I should say.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, board, I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Park, the building maintenance, um, install the furnace and AC unit, as quote provided, not to exceed six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, quote was from Andy Kelly.
Mark, yeah, motion and support, any discussion?
Did the DDA consider this?
You know what, I, I didn't bring it to them and I, I've been neglecting, I have a DDA meeting. I, I could, we can approve it and I could bring it before them and if they approve it, we'll just have it, have them pay for it.
It would probably really help our park's budget.
Yeah, but it was a budget, I budgeted eighty-five hundred and it turned out to be sixty-eight hundred. But yeah, I, I have no problem doing that. I imagine that will at least be able to get a split out of it or something, but, uh, yeah, I, I have no problem doing that. And if the board so choose to approve it, um, I'll tell them, get the work done and we can figure out the, the accounting part of it later. I want, just so we can get it done. The big, what's pushing is, because we've been paying electric heat to heat that building and the electric bill.
Expensive, isn't it?
So like, darn near a thousand bucks a month. And I'm like, holy cow. So we did pay to run a gas line out there, the gas lines in anticipation of doing this. I mean, and that's the thing, you know, wherever we can spend money to cut costs going forward, it, it's a, it's a win for us and this will be a win.
Well, we still have to pay the gas.
Well, you gotta pay the gas, but it's not, that could be near like a thousand, and I bet you'll save us eight hundred dollars a, a, a month or more, so.
Thing about Andy Kelly is, is that he's got a very sharp mind for the engineering and how your HVAC system works.
Yeah.
So he'll set it up correctly to run as efficiently as that unit possibly can, I, I think he got the right guy.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they've been around a while.
All right, good, any more discussion?
Do we need to amend our motion or not?
I have a motion, I don't have support unless somebody, did somebody do support, Joanne?
Joanne, I don't think we do. It's up to, doesn't say what it is, motion was up to, so. Okay, we have motion, support, any more discussion? All in favor of, uh, paying up to sixty-eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for, uh, furnace and a concession stand in the park, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose, motion carries. Okay, our police, we want to elevate dispatcher to full-time Kayla Accord. Elcorn. And, uh, Chief, you wanna come on up and, are you gonna talk about Dale, too?
Oh, come on, yep, come on up.
Oh, yeah. Heck, yeah. How you doing, Kayla?
Appreciate you coming today.
Well, I mean, as you know, right now, we are not able to find very many qualified people to get into either dispatch positions or patrol officer division. And the way it's been right now is, um, Kayla's been working for us in a part-time status and as always, it comes to a position where they're, okay, do I work this job, do I work this job? And she's really getting torn between the two of them. And with us, it's getting more and more frequent that we're having to cover scheduling anomalies, we're busier than we've ever been. The, the, the frequency of the calls, the severity of the calls, everything across the board, and it's not unique just to us, it's, it's pretty much everywhere right now. With that being said, Kayla has been an outstanding employee for us. She's been working every time we ask her to, as much as she possibly can, always shows up on time, does a great job, and I don't want to lose her out to someone else. So I'm looking for approval from the board to bring Kayla on full-time, make her part of this family permanent.
How long has she been in the part-time position?
Uh, let's see.
Nine months.
Coming up on a year.
Yeah, since January, wasn't it, this last year, yep. And she has passed all of the required, um, education is, and then some. So, uh, pretty much everything that she needs, uh, she's got in this point going forward. I don't see any issues with her with continuing education or anything like that, so.
She's certified.
Yep, certified EMD, um, all the requirements, uh, from the state.
And we were gonna mention, I mean, we're kinda anticipating Dale Williams.
Well, we're not sure on that, I mean, we're, um, a couple different people, that's the options that we're looking at right now as far as, um, possibly somebody going into the academy.
Right.
Which is another field that we're exploring, because let's face it, um, we've been looking to hire people now for a year and we're getting no applications.
I would be happy to make the motion to elevate dispatcher Kayla Elcorn to full-time position.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? Kayla, you know how to swim?
Yeah, I do.
Good, I gotta ask a question, you and Max, I think you can go swimming.
I look older now.
Yeah, it is. Any more, any discussion?
You think you're gonna be a officer someday?
I, I debated on it, I, I went, actually went to school to be an officer originally and I went through everything classes-wise up until the academy and it's just, I think it'd kill my mom, I can't do it.
Understood.
Yeah.
Dispatcher's an extremely important role as well.
Yeah, it's just a little less dangerous, helps her out for a hard time.
Yeah, but all the responsibility is still there.
Absolutely, and then some.
Or so, more responsible.
Or so, actually. Yeah. They're like the traffic controllers.
That's the lifeline.
Yep, that's the lifeline, so.
Unfortunately, nobody calls you because they're having a good day, so.
I know, that's why.
Don't think that that board, this board doesn't recognize that and we appreciate all you do over there.
People call nine one one, they are not having a good day.
Yes.
So you see the worst of people, of it, so, and I commend you for doing this profession, seriously, so.
We have motion and support.
Yep, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of elevating Kayla to full-time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you. All right. We have, uh, uh, next thing, it was our MTA, uh, we, we, we like to do this every year with a new, new board, principal of governance, I would like to postpone this till we have a full board. So I would.
I've, I've actually been trying to put this on our agenda since August, but we have yet to have all of our members here, so I thought it was this one. So yes, we will, we'll keep it up there, unfinished business now.
So I'll make a motion to postpone this.
Support.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, we need, wanted to have a board discussion on the utility billing for our shut-offs on our, yeah, for water. And give us some guidelines for procedures, if, if you remember during COVID, we suspended turnoffs, shut-offs, and I'll let Kristi take it over, but how many do we have now that are in the rears?
Um, she ran the report about a month ago now, probably, and we had two hundred and twenty-seven accounts that would be ineligible for shut-off. So the problem that we're having is that we don't have contact information for probably seventy-five percent of the people that are on, on this list. We did attempt to make, uh, calls, phone calls and emails for payment arrangements. We did get some people to agree to a payment arrangement and the, um, actual, um, compliance with the payment arrangements was under fifty percent, so people that agreed to a payment arrangement, then they didn't keep it. So we're just trying to look for a way, I think people are getting themselves into a hole that will be hard for them to get out of because they are not making any payments on their utility bills. There are a lot of communities that have reinstated their shut-off procedure. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we want to do it or that we have the workforce right now to do it. So I was kind of trying to think of a way that we could encourage payment arrangements. So I was, you know, kind of thinking, if we said effective January first, customers who have not contacted the Treasury Department to set up a payment arrangement, we would then post doors by route to the Water Department and they would be scheduled for shut-off. In the hopes that they will call the office between now and then, we'll get the word out, we'll send bills to schedule shut-off, or to schedule payment arrangements. And then, you know, maybe saying that if the payment arrangement was not kept, that would put them into automatic shut-off. We just have to, we have to do something to get it under control. So when we ran it, it was a total of almost a hundred thousand dollars in. And that's just penalty, that's just shut-off, so that's more than a month past their due date.
What criteria did you set for, uh, payment arrangements?
Anything they would agree to.
Yep, we just, we just want them to start making payments if it's, you know.
So if they paid the current water bill, then anything that's in rears, they pay on that?
Well, the, the rears gets paid first.
Okay.
So, you know, if, I mean, we've had people that have agreed to twenty-five dollars a week, you know. What, we, we just say, what can you, you know, we don't want to leave people broke.
We're very liberal.
But people are ignoring.
It doesn't seem like you're ever gonna catch up if you pay the rears first. If you put a freeze on the rears, have them pay the current water bill and then charge them so much dollars for what they owed in the rears, to me, that makes more sense.
I don't know if we can, though.
So our current pa, our current ordinance says that anything that's over six months old gets added to the winter tax bill. So people who have tax bills, if it's six months or older than that, it's automatically going to be put this month onto the winter tax. I don't, I don't really think there's, it doesn't separate in the utility billing module between past due and current. We just need to get them to start paying, because we literally have accounts where they are not making any payment. It's just, they just wait for it to go to winter tax.
I'm sure you've checked with other communities and what they do and.
There are some communities that don't do shut-offs anymore, so that is the, that's another. I, I think we need to do something right now to encourage payment arrangements. But I also think, um, you know, we've, I contacted the attorney to find out, could we amend our water ordinance? To explore the possibility of assessing on the summer tax as well. So we wouldn't be able to assess, it doesn't sound like the same parcel more than once per year. But because of that six months delinquent thing, sometimes it hasn't been six months to put it on the winter tax. If we, if the board amended the water ordinance and it said that we could add to the summer tax, then we might be able to start getting that taken care of that way.
So doing that, adding it to the taxes, question one, have they been paying the taxes, the winter, or the, or the winter taxes?
That is to be determined.
And on that tax bill, does it say water assessment?
Yes, it says delinquent, it says delinquent utility.
Okay, so it's, so it's satisfied during the transfer of property? Okay, so it's satisfied during the transfer of property? Yep. Correct? So somebody sells the, the home or the residence?
When we add it to the tax bill, it becomes a lien.
Right, but during the sale of the property, that lien has to be satisfied prior to the sale to go through. So somebody's going to pay it, either the buyer or the seller.
Sooner or later.
And that is something that the mortgage companies ask when they call.
So these ones that you have listed, active vacation or active shut-off, I'm assuming before we turn them back on, that balance is paid in full? I mean, some of them aren't that high, but some of them are, you know, $637.
Yeah.
So if they're shut-off, and we haven't been doing shut-offs, is it shut-off on their request? Or was this shut-off prior to?
Well, if it's, if it said active vacation, that's at their request. Active shut-off is not at their request. So there's one on the front page.
Shut-off prior.
Yeah, so there's one on the front page and then a couple on the last page.
One thing I, you know, the last thing we want to do is shut someone's water off.
Right.
And truthfully, I think we lose money of what we pay our, our Water Department to actually do it then on the fines. But it's hard to, you know, are we going to charge someone seven, eight, 80 bucks?
Out of a job.
Right, you know, so.
But I do understand what Mark is saying, you know, some, some of these folks may be so far in the hole. You know, when you have a $1,700 delinquent water bill, that's a lot of money to try and pay off.
But that's why we want to get a payment arrangement going so that they can start. Because if they don't address it at all, it's never going to go down. It's just going to keep going up, and because we're not doing shut-offs, there's no reason for them to make a, a payment arrangement.
So who's determining how much of a percentage they pay for that arrangement?
We have to speak with them and find out what, what can they afford to start paying. You know, it used to be that we wanted them to get it, we would do a payment arrangement so that they would have their bill paid off by the time their next bill came out, which is like three months. But this, some of these are not going to, it's probably going to take them a year.
So are you recommending that we institute water shut-offs until first of the year?
I would like to institute that if, if a payment arrangement is not scheduled and kept, that we would begin the shut-off process after the first of the year.
Okay, and we'll post their doors, we'll send them a letter?
We don't, we, we did away with posting doors, but I think because we haven't done this in so long, you know, I think we stopped shut-offs in April of 20, so it'll be almost two years by the time I think that, you know, this would constitute posting doors again.
I agree, I think we should put a sticker on your door, send them a letter. Send them a letter, and, and we all know the, the mail isn't 100%. Send them a letter saying, hey, you know, this is going to happen if, if you don't contact us and set up arrangements, and then after a couple, three weeks, we don't hear anything, we'll send a guy out to put, post it on their door. And then give them some more time and, and then so be it, unfortunately.
So, so basically only a fraction is on the upper, upper half of the trailer park. From what I see, everything else is residential?
Yes.
Yes. So.
And if it's six months delinquent in the trailer park, that is added to the trailer park's property tax bill.
Oh.
Okay.
So Anita's been speaking with Stacy about getting her, you know, because this is the time that we're calculating all of that. She's, she has had conversations with Stacy and told her that it's quite a big list of accounts this year, so.
So, so writing us on the winter bill, and you mentioned something about getting approval to do it on the summer bill? Is that going to be beneficial for collection?
Well, it would allow us to put it on the bill, you know. I mean, we came up with a scenario today where someone could potentially not pay their water bill for two years. And there would be no way for us to get it until we settled with the county.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Or do I have to?
We can make a motion to institute the policy.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion?
Me?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we put the word out to call the Treasury Office to schedule a payment arrangement. And if a payment arrangement is not scheduled, that we would start the shut-off process effective January 1st, 2022.
And put it on the summer bill?
And then the possibility of amending our water ordinance to assess delinquent utility greater than six months on the summer tax roll annually. So you, okay, yeah.
Support.
Okay, so we're going to send a letter out saying we're going to institute shut-offs, starting January 1st.
So to be clear, then these, this list you gave us, these won't go on the winter tax bill then?
Some, some portion of it might go on the winter tax bill. Some of it, it might be the whole amount. It could be, this was just an example of what we ran like a month ago. So it could be that a portion of this, like the very first one, $130.66, probably not going on the winter tax bill. It's just 30 days or more past due, but that doesn't mean that it's 60 days. Then there's some other ones down the list that are close to $1,500 or over $1,500. A portion of that could potentially be going onto, in this case, Channel View or whichever park it is, onto their property tax bill for winter. But there still could be a portion left that doesn't go on the tax bill because it's not greater than six months. And so that is what we would try to get payment arrangement on.
For the summer.
Gotcha.
There's, there's like 15, 18, 15 people on here that are like $1,200, $1,300 in the rears. There's a 1,600, there's a 1,500. Something's got to, got to be done. And, and, you know, it's.
Another couple things that we've had happen is we've had customers that have had leaks, and then they just stop paying.
Right.
You know, they're not even paying their current bill, they're not paying anything toward their leak. They just have not, have stopped paying.
And if there is a leak, we can adjust their sewer portion of it.
On some of the accounts, that was already done, and they're just not paying.
Right. So. Okay, so we have a motion to institute shut-off policy. Send a letter out to educate them. And when it comes, send another letter out that we're going to shut you off on this date. And then we'll try to sticker warnings on the doors before we shut them off. And, and then also, it's not really part of, well, we will amend the ordinance to allow us to add on the, the rearage on summer taxes.
And, and then also that we would, if they make a payment arrangement and they don't keep it, that would put them into automatic shut-off.
And we send them a letter.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah.
I think it's going to be a huge process, but we have no desire to turn people off, but some payments need to start being made.
Yeah. Fortunately, you got to force the handle. You got, we are, we haven't been a priority, and we have to become more of a priority.
So what specifically is the motion, because I have to record it?
To a sta, motion to establish a procedure for the collection of delinquent utility bills.
So we're not, we're not approving the actual procedure, we're just going to make a motion for you to establish it, and then we'll bring that back and vote on it?
Sure.
If you want, I mean, I just.
Unless, unless, I mean, we kind of know the procedure. We're going to find all the delinquent accounts. Whatever doesn't go to taxes, that's going to be the leftover. We need to send out a letter. I mean, if you wanted to start on it this week, you know, otherwise, it's going to be, I mean, otherwise, we're getting to the end of November that we're going to start sending out letters. They're not going to get them until December, and they're going to have less than a month
With Christmas, yeah.
Before January comes, and we're saying, too bad you didn't call us.
I say sooner the better.
And that's, and that's contrary, or that, that's in, in uniform with our current procedure or ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to do anything with that, other than, another, another motion probably would be to?
Couldn't we just make a motion to, because we, we made a motion to suspend water shut-offs? Can we just make a motion that we're going to?
Reinstate.
Reinstate water shut-offs?
I make a motion that we reinstate.
Reinstate, you got to rescind your old one.
Oh, I rescind my previous motion.
Crash that, Alex.
Does someone need to support my rescissions?
Support.
Okay, and then I make a motion that we reinstate our shut-off procedure effective January 1st.
Support.
Hey, I'm in motion to support. Any more discussion? There are none. Roll call. No, we can do it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we have, you know, approved, we, we have an issue with, we mail checks and to pay our bills, and they're not getting to our, our vendors in time. So go ahead, Chrissy, we want to give Chrissy the authority to open a account to make ACH payments.
So like I've been seeing at board meetings for incoming checks to mail ahead of time, we are having an issue where we're not receiving invoices in a timely fashion to then cut a check and send them out. So we're getting charged hefty fees. We have mail that is lost. We constantly have a list of checks where we receive something saying that they haven't gotten the check, and now we've got a watch list, we're issuing stop payments. That gets costly if we have to start issuing a lot. And Janet and I were talking, and there are many bills that we could pay online. So I am basically asking for approval to open a bank account. I had it listed as an ACH, but after we got the procedure from BSNA, it's really what we're asking to do according to BSNA is an EFT. So we would basically enter the invoice just like we do if we're cutting a check. But within that invoice, we would mark it as an EFT. And so then, instead of, when we do a check run, instead of getting a check, we would get just a remittance document or a report that says these are the, whatever, 10 item invoices that were paid via EFT, and we would pay those online.
Sent and paid. I make a motion to approve the treasurer to open a bank account for EFT payments for vendors, suppliers.
Support.
Motion to support.
And the reason that I want a separate account is, you know, because we'll be putting our banking information out there. So when we do it, just like I transfer money for a check run, I'll transfer money into that account that only covers the amount. You know, we have to have a little slush, so probably $500 or something extra in there. But it'll keep it safe so that if we did have some kind of issue, you know, our funds would be safe.
And that's something will be on the, the bills paid?
Yeah.
In between, so, so.
We'll have to come, we'll have to come back with a resolution once we have a procedure in place. But to get the ball rolling, we want to give her the authority to open it, and then.
The bank will need a resolution, probably, so.
They'll just want the minutes, but.
Okay.
The auditors will want the resolution.
Exactly. Somebody will.
If this were a normal consumer problem, wouldn't you just put it on a card and gain some kind of a point system?
Well, you would not believe how many people don't like to take credit cards anymore because the fees for the credit cards are too high. Because that's what we were doing, like with DTE. Because DTE, I don't care, I could mail checks the same day we got the DTE bill, and they would still not get them on time. So we started paying with credit card, and now they won't even accept a credit card because we, our DTE bills are too high, it's too much money, they incur too many fees. So now we can only do it with an electronic check.
Okay, so you've thought through that logic. All right, fair enough.
So as, so as a consumer, and I pay all my bills, I probably like two checks a year, most of it, maybe more than fun with the charities, but anyway.
So the checks I write.
So EFT, what's the difference between ACH and EFT, just for my own knowledge?
ACH, so I'm talking about just inside of the accounts payable module of BSNA. An ACH to them is, we would put it in as an ACH, we would mark the invoice as an ACH, and then when we saved it, it would provide a file that we would send to the bank. And the bank, it would be like your online bill pay. The bank would run that, and the bills would be paid. We want to be able to manually go to DTE, pay the bill. Mark, if we mark it as an EFT, it doesn't provide that file at the end. It just marks the invoice paid and journalizes it.
Yeah.
However, we do have 41 DTE accounts that may get a little tedious.
Forty-one?
I got to get away.
And we tried to combine them.
We tried to combine them, but DTE couldn't handle it, and they split them all back up again, so.
But if you're putting it in, you're putting the, if you're putting the invoices in, just like you're doing the journal entry, it's, you know, it's the same as doing the journal entry.
Oh, no, the journal entry only goes into five different departments. If I put it in as an invoice, it'd be 41 invoices. Unless I'm just putting the journal entry in as a invoice itself.
Yeah, we're getting into weeds, aren't we?
We're going to have to see how that goes as far as the procedure, which is why there's not a resolution yet because we don't know what it's going to look like.
Okay, we have motion to support to allow the treasurer to go ahead and set up an EFT account for online payments. Any more discussion? There are none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, now we have to go into a closed session for some pending litigation.
Yeah, Artie, what do you think about doing our board member comments before we go into closed session?
Yeah, let's do that.
In case our public leaves and doesn't come back?
Good idea. Let's do board member comments. Cindy, you want to start us off?
Yes, I wanted to welcome, say welcome aboard to Max and to Scott, who we'll see hopefully next meeting, the newest members of our Clay Township Fire Department, and congratulations to Kayla on her elevation to full-time.
Cool.
That's all I got.
Chris?
What she said.
That's okay.
Okay, next. Chrissy?
I just wanted to say I didn't bring all of the information in for the Goodfellows, but we will be collecting again for the Goodfellows this year. So you can up your water bill payment. You can just come in and bring a donation. We will have the toy box out. We will be collecting hats and gloves, and.
Round your water bill up? Or any bill?
Yeah.
And the balance would go towards the Goodfellows?
Yep, we just need to know, you know, that that's what you're doing, that's what you intend, so.
Excuse me. That wasn't my comment. Okay.
Mark?
Congratulations to Max, Scott, and Kayla for their new appointments. Planning Commission, we approved the rezoning of several lots in Point Trumbull. It was revised slightly, so that's going into effect from RS1 to C3. And I had a bunch of stuff written down here, but I already gave it to you, so I'm done, thanks.
I want to ditto the end of this table and the end of that table.
Gotcha.
And I have not been around to be at a DBA meeting, so I have to get back on board with that. And that will be on, what, the 17th?
Yes.
Yes, the 17th. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Scott, Max, Kayla, congratulations. Good to see you. Good to see you, Joanna, it's the first meeting in like two months that either you didn't miss It's the first meeting in like two months that either you didn't miss or I didn't miss it.
I know. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. Man, I'm solid now.
Getting there.
Oh, I wanted to mention, I know some communities have elections tomorrow. We do not.
We do not, yes.
I've had people calling, what's on the bell? What's going on, Artie? What are you, no, no, no questions to be answered in Clay Township. So we do not have an election tomorrow.
Good call.
And that's about all I have. It's lots of positive, good things happening in our township, and onward and upward.
Yep.
One more, well, no, we're.
No, I would like to make a motion at 7:31 to go into closed session to review litigation.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I think we have to roll.
Aye.
Do we have to roll call?
We have to roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Mark Rashard.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Yelton.
Yes.
Chris Oren.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're in a closed session. You wanna go down?